Okay, we will call to order the March 1st, 2022, regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of College of the Redwoods. Will you please join me in flag salute in honor of those serving our country?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We proceed with our land acknowledgment. We acknowledge that the land on which we are gathered today is unceded territory of the Wiat people, who continue to live and thrive on this land today. It is surrounded by the traditional ancestral and present homeland of several indigenous nations, including the Hoopa, Karuk, Meto, Talawa, Waialaki, and Urok, that make up Humboldt and Del Norte counties. Okay, agenda item 2.0. General public comments? Do we have any public comments? No comments. We go on to 2.2, member comments. Are there members of the Board of Trustees who would like to comment? Trustee Kelly?
Thank you, President Matthews. So, last month I reported about the CCLC Effective Trustee Workshop that I attended, but today I've actually tried a little bit more of the report. I'm also passing around the Advisory Committee on Legislation, their Government Relations updated slide deck. Are they able to attend that? In addition to that, the Board will be receiving an ACCT National Legislative Summit Conference trip report. I have none of the time being able to prepare that for today, but I did attend that summit. It was very informative. The summit actually included a rural college day, which I'm excited to kind of describe in my report. And then, myself and the trustee working were able to attend the CR Foundation Board. And very excited to jump into that for this year.
Other trustee comments?
Well, I will report that I was able to attend the accreditation standard 4 teams initial meeting. And the upcoming meetings are scheduled. We were just beginning to discuss different items and the information that we have to document each of those. I was also able to attend a foundation meeting with Mr. Quello and members from College of the Redwoods Del Norte.
Any other comments? Oh, we'll move to item 2. Sorry. Item 2.3, Board Committee Reports. Trustee Mallory?
Thank you, President Matthews. The Audit and Finance Committee made up of trustee Biggins, trustee Capini, and myself met today at 1:00 to discuss with representatives from Morgan Stanley, as well as our attorney, who represents us on bonds. The resolution that is in our packets, Resolution Number 787, it's agenda item 4.2, I believe. The resolution is dealing with the issuance of what's referred to as refunded bonds. This history of this goes back to 2004, when the first community voted on the issuance of bonds in the amount of $40,320. Over the years, we have engaged in refinancing some of these bonds. And in this case, we would be looking at refunding the balance of these bonds. I think the most important point of this is to ensure that any benefits that could be delivered as a result of this refunding of the bonds would go directly back to the taxpayers in the form of the property taxes that they pay for the bonds after approval in 2004. So, the district doesn't receive the benefits. It will be the taxpayers if the board does decide to approve this resolution and if the re-issuance of these refunded bonds is completed. Based on the discussion that the Audit Committee had with the representatives from Morgan Stanley and our attorney, we're going to recommend one change to the resolution dealing with the minimum, or should say that the -- I don't say this correctly. The net present, the minimum net present savings that could be earned through the issuance of these refunded bonds. And we can discuss that further when we get to the agenda item. But I think we have a very truthful discussion. The committee is in favor of recommending this resolution with the one change that I just noted. I've also discussed with President Matthews that we make this a time-certain agenda item for 1:30 so that the representatives can join us at that time. So, I'll use President Matthews, looking at the clock. And actually, I'm sorry, it's not agenda item 4.2, it's agenda item 4.3, the general obligation bonds refunding. So, we will be discussing this further and taking action on this item at 1:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee, trustee Kelly?
Thank you, President Matthews. The Advocacy Committee, trustees Robertson, Dorn, and myself met on Tuesday, February 8th. I was appointed chair, and we started by discussing our vision for the future. We have more work to do on it. We want to refine our state and federal priorities as well. But for now, you have a copy of what we are considering right now. Primarily, we want to review and revise DTAT 2515, to kind of more clearly articulating the roles and relationships that we work to the President and others in terms of advocacy. We are interested in monitoring and influencing state and federal legislation, as well as carefully monitoring and influencing all of the state budget, as it relates to this district in particular, and community colleges in general. We're going to be meeting again at the end of this.
Trustee Biggins?
Thank you, President Matthews. The Board Evaluation Committee met today prior to this meeting, and we are in the process of reviewing last year's evaluation instrument. And we're refining it and modifying it so that we have appropriate document to present to the full board, to the trustees, to fill in a survey in April, the results of which we'll review in May.
Thank you. Any other? We move to item 2.4, approve trustee travel to CCLC 2022 Annual Trustees Conference, Friday, April 29th through May 1st. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
A second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion on this motion? Okay, then I would ask, Cynthia, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Ellen Biggins?
Yes.
Rebecca Robertson?
Yes.
Annie Kelly?
Yes.
Colleen Mallory?
Yes.
Yeah.
Richard Dorn?
Yes.
Phil Matthews?
Yes.
Okay, so we move to item 2.5, to review progress on board goals. The board goals have been attached to the packet. I will ask trustee Mallory just to watch the clock. Just depending on how long our discussion is. I'll remind you that at our January workshop, the board decided to review our goals on a quarterly basis. These goals are set for two years, so these are our goals through 2023, but we didn't want to just leave them sitting there. We discussed a couple of options. We did not decide to divide the list up because it would mean a year before some of them were even considered. So, we did decide that we would discuss our progress on our goals in total here. So, I will open that discussion. I would, we can go item by item, goal by goal, if there are any comments or questions. Or we can just ask people to comment on ones they have a concern about. I think maybe going item by item would be a better idea. So, we're looking for comments, particularly if you have concerns that, you know, much of our goals are in terms of monitoring and supporting. They're not end goals, is this happen or didn't happen? But we want to be sure that we feel we are making progress and meeting these goals. So, the first one, I'm not going to read them in total. The first one is on promoting student success, equity, and inclusion, and fiscal health by advocacy. So, board comments? Trustee comments, questions? Trustee Kelly?
On the first one, I was wondering if the board might consider adding the word access in between educational and equity and adding a common there. So, promote student success, educational access, equity and inclusion, and the fiscal health of the institutions here.
Okay, so, I guess there are goals. We can modify them anytime if we choose to do that. I think it could be a suggestion. I don't think, this is an action item on our agenda, so we can't take action to vote on making that, but we could put it on a future agenda for changing, modifying it. Any other comments on goal number one? I think we really stepped up the effort in that area in the past year and really have worked hard to, and I know that we'll be continuing to do that. Trustee Biggins?
Also, this goal helps inform the advocacy committees there in March orders.
Okay, goal number two, again, I won't read the whole thing. You can cultivate a welcoming environment and sense of belonging for all members of the district to buy. And there are four different things here in terms of supporting and monitoring, supporting district efforts. This is an area that we have certainly had a lot of focus on in the past year. Are there any particular comments or concerns about this, our work towards this goal? Trustee Biggins?
My comment relates to the appreciation I have for the efforts of our multicultural diversity center to provide, it looks like almost weekly, support groups for our diverse student body, including our student parents. That's a new interest that our Women's Caucus has been focusing on, the challenge that our students have who are also parents, and trying to juggle their family life with their school life. I think that the programs that come through that diversity and cultural, multicultural center are really benefiting our students.
Any other comments, concerns about this? Okay, we go on to number three, maintain focus on adapting to and addressing issues with a student-centered funding formula by A, B, and C. Any comments, concerns on this item? Trustee Kelly?
I was just considering adding the fiscal year 2324 target dates into the language around the I don't have anything specific there, just, I mean, I don't have any specific language to add other than when we come around to maybe taking action on this, we can add more.
To add the dates that we're focusing on?
Right, yeah.
Okay. I would comment, I feel that we get so much good information, thanks to Vice President Morrison in particular, regarding our budget situation. We've developed a really good understanding of the reports that we get, and I think that's what we rely on for much of this. I know advocacy is mentioned in C. We already know that Advocacy Committee is going to focus on funding issues of the hold harmless, et cetera. Any other? Trustee Capini?
Yeah, just a comment. I think we also get really good reports from IR considering student success and where they are at and the progress versus other institutions. I think that this board has really definitely changed its focus towards that.
Okay, okay. And that directly refers to our next one, provide support to ensure continuing progress on equity and student outcomes with special emphasis. We have seen many of those reports. We've seen how the data access program works and gives us so much information regarding that. Are there any other comments here regarding number four? Trustee Kelly?
I think I would just want to add the word access to point C. Just, in the Effective Trustee Workshop Program, we talked about, there was a session on silver lining the DEI, and it really drove home the point to me about access being a part of the DEI landscape, and just include that.
That's in item C under number four?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Number five, to ensure fiscal stability and health with special emphasis on, and of course, it refers specifically to our general fund reserve, the pension liabilities issue, our student debt, capital projects, et cetera. And all of these, I would just say, all of these are first and foremost in our discussions monthly for the most part. Are there any other comments, any concerns regarding number five?
Maybe another comment. As a board, we had made it a goal to have a 17% reserve, and we've achieved that together. And although, you know, that's never, we're never quite done with that. I mean, we need, you know, 24% is more equal to two months expenditures, but, you know, we're moving, we really monitor these things very close.
And acknowledge the work of the district.
Absolutely.
In the budget development to get us there. Any other comments? Number six, support the interest-based approach to institutional problem solving, including collective bargaining. Are there any comments? I know we have reaffirmed our commitment to interest-based bargaining. Number seven, support student success and district enrollment priorities by evaluating data on a regular basis and ensuring that data influences decision-making. Comments or concerns? I know we just received reports on spring enrollments across the district compared to two years ago and this past year, and informing us where we need to go with that. Trustee Biggins?
I think one thing that would be helpful is we could also have a sense of what steps we're taking as a result of the data that we received. So, for example, you know, when we're looking at spring enrollment, and we'll let you tell us about the next steps that we need to take to get a sense of what staff and faculty are recommending as a result of that gap.
So, are suggesting that that might be some information that we could be, that we could ask for for a board meeting?
Have a better sense of how it's influencing the decision. You know, like, okay, here's the information, now what? What are we going to do with this information?
We can, when we get to that on the agenda, please remember that.
I have something to add. So, last year, we created this data dashboard. Those are very helpful. I think it'd be really useful if we revisited those regularly and sort of looked for data, but also decided if there are other data points or other, if there's other information that we want to add to the dashboard or remove.
Okay. You're talking about the one associated with the Board of Trustees. Number eight, support through policy all accreditation efforts, as well as adherence to all AACJC standards and commission policies. Any questions or comment here?
Maybe we should remove this one?
I think we, you know, we're all involved in this effort. Number nine, plan for the future of the College of the Redwoods by our whole explanation here, including the facilities master plan, the ed master plan, partnerships with Humboldt State, economic workforce opportunities. Any comments?
Well, we need to change that language now.
Oh, yes, we need to change the name. Thank you very much. Absolutely. Any other comments? We're so highly engaged in this area, it feels like to me. Very much a lot of activity on that front. Number 10, support the development of trustees' professional skills and knowledge. Any comments or questions, any concerns that we're not, or not adequately? Number 11, monitor and support the progress of the CR Foundation in meeting its goals. Comments? Two fine trustees on the foundation board, we will be hearing from them. We hear monthly from Mr. Quello. All right, any other comments? So, if we want to modify these goals, we should put together a modification to bring to the board for a vote, which could include just a few things here that we mentioned. And this will be on our agenda again in three months for review again. And, thank you, we have made it through before 1:30. So, timing, President. Perfect timing. Okay, so we will move now, we will interrupt our agenda, and we will move to item 4.3, general obligation bonds refunding. Do we need to connect them? Oh, all right, sorry.
David Casnoca, and they're all here?
Okay. We have the resolution attached, and this is an action item, so I will ask for a motion to approve this resolution. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Further discussion?
I would like to amend that motion that the committee, the Audit Committee we met earlier, wanted to remove that one section in the highlighting, yellow, B. Section 4, with their reference to 5%. That be acceptable?
Yes, thank you.
Colleen, Colleen has a question?
Okay, trustee Mallory?
Yeah, thank you, trustee Biggins. You're absolutely correct. The committee is recommending, actually a revision of section 4, in that we would remove the minimum percentage of the 5% net present value savings, sentence says, and that the district realized at least a 5% net present value savings. And we would replace that by giving the President, President Flamer, the authority to determine whether or not the net present value savings was sufficient to move forward with the refunding.
Okay. Can we ask the mover and seconder if they're accepting of that? Okay. So, are you accepting of that modification to your amendment, your motion, excuse me? Okay. So, now, any discussion, any questions, any further comments from the board or from our representatives from Morgan Stanley?
Any suggestions, President, from Matthews? And that is that the representatives who met with the Audit and Finance Committee earlier today may want to just give a very high-level overview of these documents because the documents are very complex and lengthy, which is good, which is good. I know as I was reviewing them, and I neglected to mention this, I'm sorry, to these folks earlier today, in the resolution, in the seventh whereas, it identifies essentially four points. And I think if everyone was clear on those four points after reading the documents or having the documents explained to them, I think we'd have a really firm understanding of what it is we're doing. Specifically, the true interest cost of the refunding bonds, the sum of all fees and charges paid to third parties, the amount of proceeds to the refunding bond expected, and I thought there was a D. Yeah, the sum total of all debt service payments. I don't know if you need to address those specifically, but to me, as I was reviewing the documents, that seemed to be the crux of what many of us would be most interested in. Thank you.
So, would our representatives from Morgan Stanley like to give that high level in a nutshell what we're accomplishing here?
Sure. You know, I will actually turn it over to David Casnoca, who is bond counsel and has drafted these documents.
Hi there. This is David Casnoca from Stradling, your bond counsel. The resolution before the board authorizes the district to issue $20 million of general obligation refunding bonds, which bonds are secured exclusively by the levy of the adware and property tax. The resolution reflects the current law, which is all economic benefit to the transaction must be delivered to taxpayers, and that none of the economic benefit is retained by the district. And further, that the maturity date of the refunding bonds is not longer than the maturity date of the bonds being refinanced so that you can be comfortable in knowing that the debt is not being kicked down the road to be repaid at a later date. The debt will be repaid in the same years as currently provided for. The debt will be repaid in the same years as currently provided for. So, in addition to authorizing the issuance of the bonds, the resolution also approves three supplemental agreements, the escrow agreement, the purchase contract, and the preliminary official statement. The bond proceeds are going to be deposited into the escrow account and held by an independent financial institution until the old bonds can be prepaid. The purchase contract is the document between the district and Morgan Stanley in which you agree to sell and they agree to buy your bonds at the price determined that's mutually agreeable to the parties. And the preliminary official statement is a document pursuant to which the district communicates with the outside investor world, and it's descriptive of the district, the bonds, the tax base, and the legal environment in which bonds are being issued. It's a document that the district is having considerably input on and providing us with great help and assistance in generating updated information about the district. You may note in the draft of that, there was an erroneous reference to your old Mendocino property, which is being deleted as the document continues to be revised and will be so revised until the moment that it's given to investors. So, you're authorizing and approving those three documents in substantially the form presented, knowing that each of them will be finalized as the transaction is consummated. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about those materials.
Are there any trustees who have questions? Trustee Kelly?
So, just didn't understand, the section that was highlighted for removal from the resolution, the concept of non-returnable bonds to the district. What was the thinking in the audit committee's discussion about removing the section of the, there being at least five percent net present value savings and leaving that to the discretion of the president to decide? Like, is there a cost to refunding this money to the taxpayers that goes into play, or what's the, what's the thinking there?
If, if, trustee Mallory?
Yes, we, we did discuss that somewhat at length, and I believe I, for all my trustee colleagues on the committee, we recognize that the market could change, and the change could be minimal in terms of what the net present value savings might be. If we have a hard number in there, point five percent, and if the market on that particular day was point four nine nine, or point four nine five, based on the resolution, the district would be prevented from moving forward. So, based on the advice we were getting from council as well as from the representatives from Morgan Stanley, it seemed reasonable to leave that up to the discretion of President Flamer. That, you know, we would not anticipate, though I shouldn't speak for President Flamer, but I'll speak for self at least, we wouldn't anticipate that he would approve moving forward if the net present value savings hit like, you know, one percent. But if it, if there was a, a small difference from what our original goal was, and that we could say that would be our goal, then it made sense to give him the discretion and the authority to make that call. Am I speaking okay for you, President Flamer?
Yes, ma'am, you are.
And, and so then my question is, would it be, I'm sorry, would it be valuable to, to state that goal?
In a motion?
Yes.
Good point. trustee Copini?
Yeah, ju- just to capitalize on trustee Mallory's comments, when we met, was it Wednesday? It was four point oh seven percent. The day is closer to five percent. He's a 10-year bond from a week ago, it went down almost 30 basis points. So, it's very, especially with Ukraine and everything happening in the world.
trustee Biggins?
To your point, we have that in, better do you want it to be part of the motion? Come forward.
Thank you. trustee Kelly?
I think I was just confused by the language, district realizing, because if we're realizing it, then we're moving back. So, I just, I was thinking we were retaining.
Yeah, okay. Are there any comments or questions additionally from Board of Trustees members? President Flamer, do you have any comment?
No, I, no, I do not. I think everything's been said and answered.
Great. If there's no further discussion, we have a motion on the floor to approve it with the change that had been made. Would you call the roll, please?
Sally Biggins? Yes. Rebecca Robertson? Yes. Danny Kelly?
Yes.
Colleen Mallory?
Yes.
Tracy Copini?
Yes.
Richard Dorn?
I'm going to abstain, just because of finances.
Carol Matthews?
Yes. So, the motion has passed?
Does he need to explain further?
I, I just will say, I have a great deal of money on property taxes, so I think I need to abstain financially, you know, fiscally.
Okay.
Because of fiscal reasons?
Right, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I pay a great deal of taxes and bonds, so.
Okay. Thank you, that's, we're clear. Thanks.
I mean, I think it's a great idea, I just, I just ethically think it's better. We had this discussion last time around as well.
Okay, good. All right, that concludes item 4.3, and we will return to our agenda. We want to thank our bond counsel and Morgan Stanley for being with us again for this meeting this afternoon, and for the work that you've done with the college. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care.
Okay, so we're now at 2.6, status of Board of Trustees requests. Any question or comment? There's one item on that list at this point, I believe. Any comment or question? No. Okay. Thank you. Item 2.7, opportunity for members of the public to comment on the initial proposal from Redwoods Community College District to College of the Redwoods Faculty Organization, initially sunshined on February 1st, 2022. Are there any comments? Have we had any, any comments? No, thank you. Item 2.8, opportunity for members of the public to comment on the initial proposal from College of the Redwoods Faculty Organization to the district initially sunshined on February 1st, 2022. Are there any comments? We have any comments? Thank you. All right. So, we will move on to three consent counter agenda, action items. Any trustee can remove an item from the consent counter. Is there any trustee who wants to remove an item?
I do, President Matthews.
Trustee Dorn?
Yes, 3.4.
3.4. Is there any other?
3.7.
3.7. Otherwise, all right, so I will call for a motion to approve items 3.1, 2, 3, 5, and 6.
I approve.
I second it.
Okay, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Kelly Biggins? Yes. Rebecca Robertson? Yes. Danny Kelly?
Yes.
Colleen Mallory?
Yes.
Tracy Copini?
Yes.
Richard Dorn?
Yes.
Carol Matthews?
Yes. Okay, item 3.4, approve ratified personnel items, act.
President Matthews, I just need to abstain on this from the vote. There's a conflict, financial.
Okay, and let's go on to 3.7 and do one motion, won't we? So, yes, 3.7.
First of all, I want to clarify that we'll certainly approve curriculum that has been approved by the faculty. I just have a question on the legend that is provided in the summary of course changes. Specifically, I couldn't find what the why meant. Maybe I'm getting a little bit too down into the weeds, but when, you know, we, we look at the column for CSU transfer, you know, I, I get the A and the P and the R, but what is the why?
President Flamer?
I don't know.
I thought it was like, yah.
Or is Academic Center President Wall on the line? Aaron Wall, are you available?
I am on the line. You know, I don't recall seeing much of that why either before. Usually, I'm looking, let me see.
So, why are A, like, approved?
Could I venture an answer? This is under the column of CSU transfer, and referring to those courses, and I believe, I, I think that it would mean, yes, it's transferable, and the A would stand for that that's been approved.
I would agree.
That it's a, in the, that that's a transferable course.
I agree.
Yeah, that absolutely makes absurdity. Yeah, a- as I was reviewing it, I thought, I bet that's what it means.
Yeah.
But because it wasn't in the legend, I, you know, it just gave me pause. And again, I, I'm not questioning the curriculum by the faculty, I was just confused, and maybe just.
If you see up above, in the new courses, under UC transfer or CSU transfer, it says P, which I'm sure is for proposed.
Well, and that's, you've explained in the legend, P is for pending.
Oh, pending, okay.
trustee Biggins? I just want to express my appreciation to the curriculum committee for approving the HOOPA, the elementary HOOPA course. We currently have had a Bureaucracy course, but not the HOOPA course, and we very much appreciate it.
Okay.
Yes.
Are we good?
Yeah, we're good, I'm good.
Okay, then I will accept a motion to approve items 3.4 and 3.7.
I second it.
All is in favor? Oh, excuse me, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Sally Biggins? Yes. Rebecca Robertson? Yes. Danny Kelly?
Yes.
Colleen Mallory?
Yes.
Tracy Copini?
Yes.
Richard Dorn?
Abstain.
Carol Matthews?
Yes. Okay, thank you. I know, I, it's okay, I, I hope. Yes, I could have separated them. Good. Okay, we'll go on to action items. Action item 4.1, approve the financial status report. I will ask for a motion to approve.
I'm going to approve. I second.
Okay, Vice President Morrison?
So, first off, I will review the first attachment to January 22 report for March 22 course. And this report is for the month ending in January, so it's 58.33% to fiscal year, and it's showing revenues and expenditures to date. See that we have received some additional property tax revenue, so we're now at 56% of the budget, and our state portion is also quite on par with our, with our budget. Going down to our expenditures, mostly the same, if you look at our, our salaries and benefits, we're at about 54.3 or 52.4% of our, our budget amount, and so overall, we are still anticipating 17.2% ending fund balance. We may see some adjustments coming in the next month, because the P1 of our report just came out yesterday, so I'll be taking a look at that and see what adjustments might be based on the revenue side. And we also continually to assess on the expenditure side, if we can make any budget adjustments there. And just touching back on the fund balance, and, and we recently bought the recommendation from the chances office about the two-month worth of total operating expenses as a recommended fund reserve. And I just kind of want to iterate the fact that it's less of a focus on an actual percentage and more on a right-sized amount for your district. And so, we're having some very intense, intense discussions with the advisory committee right now on what that really should look like for this district. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
trustee Kelly?
Are you aware of any kind of reports provided by the county to CR about the property tax allocation by jurisdiction, or even down to like the property taxpayer? I've always kind of thought, you know, as a property taxpayer, how much of my tax is going to CR? And I think it would be a, a useful discussion for the community to kind of see how much they're supporting CR or, or are that. And I don't know, is there anything provided by bar phone or in terms of like, associating the students to the college by jurisdiction?
We did touch upon that when we sent out the, the, the report card, if you will, to the committee about how important CR is to Dale Nord, Humboldt, and KT. I think that we can go back and take a look at that, but Julia, I'm not sure that we can get it by jurisdiction, or are you aware of that? It's, it's open information, I'm pretty sure we can get it.
I've done a few searches on my own, just trying to, I was trying to find a total assessed value for Humboldt County, and you can do it on a, I think, a payer level, or a parcel number, or an address, but if that's just try to do your own inquiry, I've never reached out to the assessor's office to see if we could get something more conglomerate. I would be interested myself.
Trustee can discuss it on that.
Okay, well, remember it for when we get there. Okay, are there any other questions? If not, we're ready to vote. Cynthia?
Kelly Biggins? Yes. Rebecca Robertson?
Yes.
Danny Kelly?
Yes.
Colleen Mallory?
Yes.
Tracy Copini?
Yes.
Richard Dorn?
Yes.
Carol Matthews?
Yes. Thank you. So, the item 4.2, first read of AP 4020, program curriculum and course development. President Flamer, do you have any comment?
This, this is just an informational item.
Right.
And this item has gone through the Senate, ASBC, as well as through college council. And after the board's informational item today, we will make, I will make this active.
Right, because is it both APs?
Correct.
Which we do not vote on.
Correct.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from trustees? Trustee Mallory?
So, assuming that means we will not have to revisit it, even though it says first read.
Correct.
So, it's read.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, great, great, thank you.
They read.
All right.
I'm going to use that.
Hearing no questions or comments, this will, as you say, become active APs. Okay, 4.3 we have done, and so we move to five informational reports. 5.1, student success data on spring enrollment. This is some of the fresh data that we just referred to in looking at our goals. President Flamer, do you have comments?
Thank you, although we are, we are 23% down overall, we have not lost ground in terms of overall spring enrollment since last spring, and this topic of enrollment is on cabinet and expanded cabinet's agenda and the dean's council agenda all the time. So, we, right now, we are using the data both in spring and annualized data to, to determine our fall, of course, schedule and our overall policies and procedures in regard to enrollment. So, we are heavily in those conversations now. Things are pretty fluid, of course, given where, where we are with, with the pandemic.
Yes.
So, the question that Vice President Mayor and I and the So the question that Vice President Mayor and I and the deans are, have a conversation about is how do we define the institution? Are we a online institution, an online institution, or are we an in-person institution? So coming to that balance will, quite frankly, dictate how we move forward with, as, as, as an institution, defining who we are moving forward.
Trustee Kelly?
I don't know if I mentioned, but during the advisory committee on legislation meeting, they mentioned a committee that's going to come out of there or it's going to come out of the CEO's group. But they're trying to put together a focus group around enrollment improvement. Good for us to participate.
Yes, matter of fact, we did submit an, an application to, to, to participate. But again, we'll just have to wait and see. The difference, of course, is, is trying to tailor what's best for CR as a rural institution versus what's best for an LA or San Diego. So that's again, is wherever that balance will ever, what's best for us versus what's best for anyone else.
I'm so glad to hear we've, right?
We did. I agree.
I would just comment that it's clear to see the impact that the pandemic has had on enrollment. But if we look at the change from 2021, this is good news in that we have seen increases from the worst. So we know that things have moved in the right direction. Hopefully will continue and that I would say that clearly much of our response has been successful in getting students back. They're not all back by any means, but we have moved in a positive direction in the last year.
And I, and I cannot underscore the value that the education master plan will provide on, when bringing us back to health in the future. So that plan is both impressive and aggressive and it's going to be hard. But that really, that plan lays out the ground, the, the guideline and a roadmap to how we can become a more healthy institution. All we have to do is, is adhere to this very strong aspirational roadmap.
Trustee Biggins?
One of my observations in looking at data was the, the deep decline at Delmore, at least from 2020 of 83%, which seems disproportionate to compare to KT or the main campus in Eureka. Eureka being 59.9 and Contra Grande being 61.6. Is there any discussion or observation about why it was so much, such a higher percentage for Delmore?
Jerry, you're talking to the deans on what's going on in Delmore?
Yeah, thank you Sally. I think part of it was the shift to online instruction, which shifted the FTS in many cases away from Delmore onto the virtual campus side. And it was a disproportionate impact on Delmore. The KT numbers also were, you know, takes your breath away a little bit. And the internet infrastructure up there is one issue, obviously. Down in the valley, we have so, so much of the virus.
And the turnover of staff, I think is a big factor that needs to stay on our radar.
I think the point about, we wouldn't think about the online, the shift to online creating what looks like a geographical shift. It's not geographical, but it, it looks like it when it's seen in these numbers. And I think that's a point to keep in mind too. Trustee Kelly?
Well, I just want to say to the public that my listeners, you know, seeing what I see of the community about college advancement, the great work we're doing there. We're everywhere and excellent marketing campaigns out there. And, you know, I think that sure, our colleges is experiencing trends as other colleges are. This has already been mentioned as an argument, but, but I do think we're doing a good job of getting it out there and telling everybody what a great value our college is. And honestly, some of the trends that I'm seeing with the state universities and things, the cost of education continue to be the greatest value out there. And just really proud of our group for getting that message out there better than we've ever had before, I think.
I'm just thinking about Delmore too and remembering that the college had to set up some classroom space and computer lab space for students to come in to take online courses. Because they don't have the access at home. And obviously, that's going to impact the number of students who can or will do that. So it's the rural, I'm sure that's a factor in KT as well. And generally, I mean, some places are better than others. Trustee Kelly?
I have one other question. So, so we have a probably technical office in CR now. Maybe signage needs to be changed. Is there a CR office on HSU's campus?
No, there is, there is not, but, but we are talking about doing that.
That moves us to 5.2, informational item, diversity, equity, inclusion and accessibility report. We have written report here. Trustee Biggins?
Really appreciate this report. Yeah, I had no idea of the extent of this, you know, activities that are going on in this area. And I'm, I'm really going to look forward to these monthly, thanks to trustee Kelly's recommendation, this monthly opportunity to see the progress that they're making towards this goal.
Trustee Mallory?
Yes, thank you. I, I was very appreciative of trustee Kelly's recommendation as we went through our goals to add the term access in various areas. And I, I wondered if accessibility would be a better word as being recommended by the chances office. Access is a, as you know, a much broader term. And accessibility, at least as it's being defined by the chances office, is more focused on those who are less than able or who have a disability. And I wasn't sure if that's what you had in mind when you were recommending the term access.
It was, it's just that the, I feel like the broader language also speaks to other issues like registration complication, you know, the whole onboarding.
No, I, I, I agree, access is a much, you know, all encompassing term, but I wasn't sure what your thinking was on that since it is something that, I believe you said you heard at a conference or something. And this seems to be of great interest to the chances office at this time, which is good. I'm pleased to see it.
And even though we know how the term accessibility is being used, it certainly covers people's access to process as well. So I noted the continuing discussion regarding the screening committees and how to provide training there. So we just note that it's something the board has felt was very important in our hiring process to be sure it's reaching down every level of the process. Any other comments? Okay, we move on to number six, organizational reports. Academic Senate President Erin Wall?
Hello, I'm happy to be here with you today. Oh, I'm getting a little funny feedback on there. Sorry about that. Thank you for the chance to address the board today. Um, the screening committees, as was just mentioned, are now in the process of starting to conduct the interviews. And faculty at our last academic senate meeting really expressed the same concern that was just expressed about the implicit bias training, making sure that we all are comfortable in being able to screen the candidates appropriately. Because we are committed to hiring a diverse set of faculty. And I appreciate the administration and CRFO's attention to quickly looking at finding, at least, you know, offering the training. And also looking to negotiate that moving forward. The accreditation work has begun. I attended for the academic senate, the accreditation institute put on by the state academic senate. So I can support that work there. As we move forward, we're getting ready to hear up for our spring plenary for the statewide academic senate. And so I'll be attending the area 18 with my colleagues from the Northern California region to get a sense of what's happening on the state level here. And that happens over spring break. The senate's getting ready to meet again. And we don't meet as much in the spring because of where the various breaks fall. But we're moving on to look at how we can really partner with our student services folks to improve the experience for our students. We have both Associate Vice President Morrison as well as our Director of Student, I think it's a student, I'm looking here, sorry, I just, Director of Student Success Pathways. To make sure that as we move forward, that there's not work faculty really need to get to be doing to support our students in completing their degrees as, as we move forward. And how we can better support each other's work. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for President Wall?
You know, I did have one other, I'm sorry, one other thing I wanted to mention that's come up at the academic senate that we've been talking about. And that is looking at our leadership structure and the terms. So we're looking to add a bit more flexibility. Because right now, we have a rotating terms of one year, vice president, one year as president, and then your past president. And while that gives folks an opportunity to step into leadership, we've been looking at our ambitious plan under the educational master plan. And we're considering whether that's always the route we want to do or we want to have flexibility for leadership to stay in position to provide some continuity. And so we'll be looking at that also at this upcoming meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, 6.2 CRFO, President Hagerty?
Hello, everyone, it's good to see you. Thank you for having us on the agenda. The sunshining process finished today, just a little while ago, which means that CRFO and the district can move forward with scheduling negotiation sessions. We have our core team in place and are ready to start. We are keeping the core team pretty small and then we'll bring in expertise as needed. There's some areas of the contract that need to be cleaned up. And in a meeting this morning, I heard we have 69 MOUs that are part of this two-year contract. So all of that will be reviewed as part of the process. When I was looking over notes from the last month to, to look at what I would report to the board today, I saw some real themes emerging and I've heard some of these things in, in your meeting here today already about the, the situation that the pandemic has left us in and that it's unfamiliar and kind of strange, unknown. It appears that we're, none of us are completely certain about what post-pandemic is going to look like. But what has become evident is that we need to remain nimble and continue to evaluate that and to keep our communication open with our students and community at large. And I don't think we're alone in the country in what is occurring for us too. I was glad to see the enrollment went up a little bit over what I saw for last semester. So these themes have come up in meetings that I've attended with senate colleagues and with the administration here in the HSU summit and in statewide meetings. As always, I'm appreciative of the working relationship we have with Dr. Flamer. Our conversations have been problem solving in nature and we can get to the root of what we're attempting to address. We've seen him working collaboratively and creatively to focus on the current needs like hiring and retaining diverse faculty and opening up communication and getting input from our student population also. Similar conversations are occurring at our bi-monthly meetings with the administration during our SARC and problem solving meetings. And those have been productive. We have a really good partnership with the senate leadership. We're very grateful, the CRFO is very grateful for that. We hear very frequently with communication with our colleges, our colleagues throughout the state, that that relationship is not a good one on a lot of campuses. I, I think the smallness of our college, college and our community really influences this. And I think we can work together to, to move us forward with some of the challenges we're seeing. I have attended the, the CR and HSU summits. This last one, I found particularly interesting to hear about the, the building that they'll be partaking in on the campus. And some of the conversations there about their recruitment of faculty and some of the concerns that we share on how do we get the best faculty in our communities and retain them, not just get them here, but get them here to stay too. I've been involved in some activities with FAC in the last month. I attended a webinar on the shrinking mission of the California Community College. This was particularly interesting, looking at curricular changes, particularly AB 705 and AB 1705, which are changing the rules for medial education. Many feel that this is changing the California Community College system mission from fulfilling the needs of the community and taking away some of the resources from transfer. Our technology needs throughout the system have been talked about in some of these statewide meetings also. And these difficulties have been in place pre-COVID, but of course COVID has exacerbated this. This coming weekend, I'll be attending an in-person board meeting in Sacramento of FAC and then the advocacy and policy conference. Individuals throughout the state will be there masked. We all need to be immunized, but we'll gather together in person. And part of the conference, conference will be focusing on advocating for our particular college needs with the legislature. But it's going to be a little bit different this year, as I guess everything is. So any questions for me? That's the end of my report.
Trustees? No, thank you very much for joining us and for your report and all of your involvement.
Thank you.
Brings us to 6.3 classified, President Tammy Inghman. Welcome.
Good afternoon, everyone. As already mentioned by President Hagerty and President Wall, thank you guys very much for continuing to have us on the agenda and giving us our own slot to speak. As I've mentioned before, there are many counterparts across the state that don't have this option. So this is, it's, it's very well recognized and appreciated. Just a couple of points that I wanted to, or comments I wanted to touch on today. CSEA leadership has been working on making sure that all of our shared governance committees have classified staff on them. We have some new members this time and they've been working on getting reports out to us at our chapter meeting. I do know we still have a few committees that are empty and we're still trying to be very diligent at getting those seats filled. I'm also happy to report that we have a new communications officer for our chapter. That is Bryn Allen. Very happy to have Bryn on board with her, with their experience that they have mentioned in their candidate statement with newsletters and communications, really looking forward to getting a newsletter out and more communication. So congratulations to Bryn again and welcome aboard. And I don't remember if I had reported last month or not, but the CSEA state level board meeting for March was supposed to be hosted by College of the Redwoods 509. That meeting has actually been moved back to headquarters, headquarters in San Jose due to the still, you know, things still going on with COVID. So for the third time in a row, that meeting has been. So, for the third time in a row, that meeting has been rescheduled from CR. Happy, happy, happy hoping that twenty twenty-three will maybe be the year that we actually get to host the meeting. And then I want to give a shout out to our men's and women's basketball teams and wish them the best of luck. Men are playing tonight, women, I believe, play on Thursday. I love seeing them in the playoffs again, so best of luck to those teams, and that's my report for today.
Thank you. Any trustee comments or questions? Thank you, President Inghman. Our student trustee, I saw that she was having connection problems. Is she currently with us?
Hi, I hope you all can hear me.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Ms. Remy, for joining us.
Yeah, so I've been getting kicked off this Zoom. I've probably been kicked off forty times now, so if I get kicked off, just move on. But I have a few things to talk about today. So, starting off, ASCR is looking to form a ad hoc student committee with me as the chair so that we can kind of, instead of having to find students to put on all the different committees to advise, there's one committee that different committees or people can come to to get student input on. And then also at our last meeting, so yesterday, we had a few different clubs come to get rechartered. So, the Pelican Bay Scholars Redwood Garden Club got rechartered, as well as the API or Asian Pacific Islander Club, the Craft Club, and a Welding Club are all now up and running. We also got a new student senator for the Eureka Campus, Mason Koski. And then I have some exciting news. So, one of my projects I've been working on this year was an art contest with scholarship awards for College of the Redwoods students, and that is now up and running.
You're with me.
So, we will be having that done shortly. And that is all I have today.
Wonderful, thank you. Are there any trustee comments or questions? Thank you for persisting, not only in your role with ASCR, but trying to join the board meeting. So, thank you very much, Brianna. We move on to seven administrative report, seven point one, President Flamer.
Thank you. I have two comments, but I would like to cede some time to Bob Brown to talk about student athletics. I know that he is, I know that he's very quickly trying to move on to get ready for the playoff game tonight. Bob, do you have anything for that?
Yeah, thank you, President Flamer, and thank you to the board for having me today.
Welcome.
... for a few seconds. And quick shout out to Tammy for mentioning the group. Yeah, I, we certainly have a couple of things that we're really excited about that transpired over the course of this past weekend. It's a very quick turnaround from Sunday seating meeting to hosting a game tonight. But I have to put out a special thanks to Molly and Jesse and print services that we got our tickets printed, so I'm going to leave some tickets behind, order you all complimentary tickets to come tonight. You bring your mask as well, though, in that. And then we also, special shout out for the back-to-back championship of the men's team. You know, it's a year in between, we kind of get to celebrate like we're three-year champions, instead of just two. But with their back-to-back conference championship, there's some flag and gear that you can order online and represent out of the community as well. I wanted to sort of quickly just say something with regards to both these teams. I addressed both teams just earlier today in practice, and when I kind of got emotional, especially with the men's group. These groups of student athletes have been a really special and unique group. They've exemplified exactly sort of what I would say was my vision of what, of how I think I envisioned our student athletes to represent the college and represent the community. Not only have they had such great success on the court, but they've all been outstanding citizens. They've been outstanding students. All of them, many of them are all getting an opportunity to go and play on where you love them. They've been truly an inspiration to the entire department and into the rest of the programs. As to where we're sort of trying to match each of our programs. And their example has really given a great testament to some of the other programs. This past fall was the first time since we've started captain down at the entire athletics department. As a whole, all the student athletes achieved above a three-point oh GPA. It was a three-point one-one team initiative, which is excellent. And those two teams are, respectively, the women are in three-point four-six range, and the men are at three-point two-nine. So, it just, it really speaks to sort of the level of achievement that they've all accomplished, and it's helped rise all the rest of our programs. Another thing that I just, like, I got you up today, too, because I'm working on Coach Elmore getting out his good news. But he said this to me today with our track and field programs. We currently have our women's tennis parbo is number one ranked in the state. So, that's a kind of a big deal for us, a small little college in both the fifteen-hundred and eight-hundred meter event. And Brianna Green is ranked third in the state and second in the two-hundred and second in the four-hundred meter. On the men's side, four-hundred meter hurdles, Nathan Woody is ranked first in the state. So, for us to have two currently state leaders, it's just, again, a testament of what our coaches are doing and the time we're putting in. And I'm very proud of them all, and yes, we look forward to tonight. It's a quick turnaround. I'm going to get over there and start selling tickets right now. And we really truly believe there's a pathway to making it to the final course, so that's the goal for both squads, but it all starts tonight. So, do you have any questions or any comments or anything about anything with regards to any of the teams? Thank you, President.
I would just comment that every time we see something, I see them a lot on Facebook, but in the paper, Facebook, wherever, that is promoting our athletic teams and their success, there's lots of reasons to do that, and not necessarily the first. But one of the things is that I know it is drawing students to come who are interested in those sports. I've seen that at our high school at Fortuna, a game that I was at, where these students are talking about coming to see our to play. And that's, that's not the first thing, really, but that's a great part of the whole success of these programs. It feeds continued success.
Absolutely, thank you. And that is certainly the goal, and yeah, they did do a very great article yesterday on Fortuna, of course. So, yeah, it's certainly been something that's been rubbing on. And we've emphasized the question, we're doing the things the right way, and we're getting it down the right way. And yes, recruiting in many ways makes care of itself, so that's something that we're starting to recognize, obviously. I will mention one thing that really, too, really quickly, as far as the Cal Poly. Tracy was talking earlier about the summit, we were talking summit. And I really appreciate the district's efforts towards this and our partnership with Cal Poly Humboldt. In my experience, and this wasn't always the case, we've developed a much, we've forged a much closer relationship with their athletic department. Cooper, the athletic director there, and I have become good friends. We've had three or four meetings. And a part of the testament of what's going on with that is just this week, you know, we have all the CSUs coming here tomorrow and Thursday to utilize our gym for some practices, because they're hosting the tournament this week. You know, in years past, maybe when they were hosting, we wouldn't have necessarily had that opportunity. So, it's good for those students to come see our campus, and it's great for our students to also meet some of these four-year players and get a chance to shake their hand or whatever it takes to be, so it'll be good.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll leave these to you.
In my last comment, I do want to thank Sally for mentioning about the Hoopa one B class. And I really do, again, want to underscore the importance of that class, and it really shows the connection that our faculty are having not just to the board's goals and mission, but also the initiative that is codified in the education master plan. So, we are doing very well, faculty, staff, and the managers are doing very well to adhere to what the education master plan is guiding us towards. So, I wanted to point that out to you.
I know, I would, trustee Capini.
Oh, just a comment on the education master plan. Yeah, I think it really mirrors that community needs, you know, good paying jobs. I mean, everything about it, if we put it into practice, it's going to be, it's going to be awesome.
And I don't know any of the details and don't need to, but historically, I'm just pleased to see the Native American language programs, because there was a time when the college couldn't see its way to approving people as qualified instructors in those languages. So, over time, there has been change, improvement, acceptance, whatever that has made it possible now. Didn't always, it wasn't always.
Correct, I remember.
Yes. Okay, thank you. We move on to vice president instructions.
Thank you, Mary, welcome. Thank you. Two things in addition to my normal report. I do want to announce a vid semester celebration that will be happening at Six Mile of Trinity branch for our students up there on Monday, March twenty-eighth, from eleven thirty to two. The convention is going out later, but I wanted to just put that date and time in your head so people can remember that. I know they would love to see as many of us up there as possible. A V P, Molly and I will be making the trip over, and I'm hoping that our transportation is reliable this time when we actually make it. I'm looking forward to that. The other thing I wanted to just note, and I know that Dr. Flamer made this announcement to the campus community earlier, but I do want to recognize the passing of longtime welding professor, Danny Walker. Passed this month, or in February. Tammy started teaching at College of the Redwoods in our welding technology program back in nineteen eighty-five. And became a full-time faculty, attended high school, remember in twenty-ten, and retired about just May. So, I know that his students will miss him, his colleagues will miss him, and I want to extend my condolences to his alma mater. A sad, a sad thing to happen to him. Other than that, I would be happy to answer any questions you have about my.
Board members, comments or questions? I will comment, I was just really excited to see the zero emissions program, the training that's going into our faculty for that, the resources that are being put into that training and to the equipment that's needed for that program. I just think it's, I'm sure in tune with the master plan, of course, and just another example of the college moving forward and not just doing what we've done, but what might now be, what has to be done.
It will have to be done.
Exactly.
So, I haven't even had a chance to put Dr. Flamer on this, but I was involved in an interview yesterday with someone from the Redwood Region Climate and Community Resilience Hub. They're working with the Albert Berry Foundation and the Albers Community Foundation on deriving a potential community benefits agreement for the offshore wind project, wherein members of the community would make specific requests if whoever gets those leases to support things like workforce development. So, I spent an hour on Zoom yesterday with one of their representatives, and they've invited representatives from the college to be actively involved in that process. They're talking about, like, tell us what you need to make this training happen, available. So, it's very exciting. I'm looking forward to working with them, and it just feels like so many things are contributing. Very, very exciting.
Thank you. Okay, we move on to seven point three, vice president administrative services Morrison.
Yes, thank you. I will just add to my report, just to, the links that are provided for the capital project, visit those frequently. There will be periodic updates, and also, we are working on procuring a worksite camera that will record video and take pictures. It will be used to make stop motion videos of the project as the state progresses, and will also help provide some security.
Any questions? Thank you. It's exciting to kind of be able to keep up with how things are going. Okay, seven point four, executive director of college advancement and the foundation, Mr. Quello. Welcome.
Captain and trustees, still seeing, I've attached the quarterly report, the board report, while it's highlighted several bullet points of success stories for this last quarter. In addition to this, the foundation sits on the executive committee for the Humboldt Coad. The Coad will be having its first quarterly meeting here this week. There are already forty-six organizations that have signed up for the Coad, with another ten in the queue. So, we're continuing to keep a really strong commitment from the community in supporting the growth of the Coad. Any questions about the quarterly report or the bullet points?
My thought just comes to mind as we focus on community partnerships and community resources, and what does the community need and everything, what a big role the foundation is playing in those connections because of not only this, but other, you know, activities of the foundation that bring the community together.
Thanks. I think it's been very helpful to be out in the community regularly and all these different organizations representing the foundation and districts. It definitely keeps us in touch with the changing needs that are happening out there, and things continue to rapidly develop. It's great that there are so many different representatives from the college that are involved in the community now.
Trustee Biggins.
I was wondering, in relationship to the Coad, has, you know, Indian Health or even Kamau, some other health groups been interested in participating, or is it just St. Joseph's?
That's a good question, trustee Biggins. I'll have to go back and talk to directors and see if they've been approached or if they have approached us, and if not, I think that's the.
I'm thinking of Eastern Humboldt. I don't know about how much of this covers. Would also cover Del Norte, or is it just mostly Humboldt?
The Humboldt Coad specifically covers hard county, but as part of the mandate of the Humboldt Coad being formed, we're taking the regional lead in supporting the Coad developing both in Delmore and Trinity. Currently, the foundation is assisting leadership in Trinity County to hopefully receive grant funds to begin their Coad. So, we have our fingers crossed that we can get that up and running as well.
Southern Humboldt also has, might be a nurses.
Yes, and if any of you have organizations that you think we should approach, make sure you contact our representatives here, our trustees, trustee Kelly and trustee Capini, and check those organizational names and make sure we get them to, so that you can approach them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to item eight, future agenda items, approve a trustee request to place an item on a future agenda. I'm going to recall that one of the ones we talked about was having more information on how the enrollment data is being used and reflected in discussions about changing in order to capitalize on and continue to improve the enrollment. Is that appropriate to you, Doctor Flamer?
It is.
Okay, is it board consensus that we would like that information? Okay. Trustee Kelly?
Yeah, so, I don't know if it would be better from the property assessor or from the tax collector, but an idea about the revenues that have been collected, that have come to the college, being able to raise those back to jurisdictions, to tax. I would certainly like to be able to thank people in my district, but to me, it's. To me, it's almost like a, I know it's not exactly a foundation donation, but these are folks in our community who are paying into this district. And I just, it'd be nice to build those things.
So when you say jurisdiction, are you talking about trustee dis areas?
No, 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 no. I just mean like, you know, this city, this unincorporated county portion, that city. But, you know, in some dream world, if we could thank individual taxpayers for what they've contributed to CR, that'd be great. But I just mean by jurisdiction, by city, by area. Kind of like what you did for what the benefit that CR puts out to the community. I'd like the community to see that we see, that they put into this college. I don't know if I'm expressing myself.
Yes, yeah, I just wasn't sure what you meant by jurisdiction. Is this appropriate?
Yes, it is.
Okay, consensus of the board that we would like to be able to get that information? Appropriate? Okay, any other requests for future agenda items? And we will move on to disclosure of items to be discussed in closed session. Today in closed session, the board will have a discussion pursuant to Government Code 54956.9B, pending litigation, Delmar County Court Case Number CBUJ 20191036. So we will adjourn to closed session. Oh, I need to ask if there's any public comment on our closed session item. There are none. We will...